Well, good afternoon and thank you for joining us for the Lethbridge School Division Budget Meeting of Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. I would like to begin by acknowledging we're gathering together today on the traditional land of the Blackfoot people. To begin, we will ask for any additions to the agenda. And if there are no additions, we will ask for a motion to approve the agenda. And so, board members, if you would like to approve, please just go ahead and unmute your mic and put forward that motion.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Doug. As I am unable to see everyone, if people could raise their hands on their Teams app application, so I can see a positive vote, that would be appreciated. So, call to question, all in favor of approving the agenda? So carried. Thank you. Number three, opening comments. Every trustee has up to five minutes to share comments and concerns and/or concerns with the budget as we have been presented. And so, again, as I cannot see everyone, what I will do is I will call trustees by name and they will be given their time of five minutes to make their comments on the budget. Jan, I will start with you.
Well, thanks very much, Christine. And I won't speak for any length, but what I just wanted to comment on was this has been an extremely difficult year, not only for working on our budget and staffing, but this has been so difficult for parents who've had to go with online learning off and on and off and on and have done a fabulous job. I just really applaud the parents for doing this and being so good about it. The students have somehow or another, as all kids do, kind of fit in with this and gone along with it. But most of all, I'd like to applaud our staff. As I said, it's been a difficult year for everybody, but particularly for our staff, because I know that they are so aware of making sure that their students get the proper teaching. And it's difficult for them when, again, the online has been off and on throughout the year. So, I hope as we go through the budget, people will take into account the difficult year this has been for everybody. And again, our staff certainly come through with fine colors and we do applaud them. So, thanks again.
Thank you, Jan. I'll now call on Lola to speak.
I would like to thank Mark DeBoer and Christine Lee for all the work on the budget and all the others that were involved. I would also like to thank the Instructional Budget Committee for their work in allocating budget resources to where they are needed. And prudent decisions have been made to balance the uncertainty of enrollment due to the pandemic while maintaining necessary supports for our students. And it was good to see that the government recognized the specialized learning needs of early learners through additional learning support grants for PUF students.
Thank you, Lola. Clark, I'll call on you next.
Thanks, Christine. I share the thoughts of Lola and Jan, but I'd also like to give a thanks to the province and to the federal government because although it's been, you know, we all know it's been a horrendous year for many folks, not just in education, but family and work and all of that stuff's been really difficult. But the funding, they recognize that it's difficult, our government funding partners. And so, I'd like to thank the government for allowing to recognize the mitigation funding. It may only be for one more year, but at least it allowed us not to have a tragic budget on top of all of the other things that have happened this year. So, I'd like to thank everybody, including the Instructional Budget Committee, and but more specifically, the government funders for allowing us to have a budget and funding us in a way that recognizes the difficulties we've been going through.
Thank you, Clark. Donna, I'll call on you next.
I'd just like to thank the budget team and Mark DeBoer for the outstanding budget. It's on our website. It's going to be on the website all year long. So, anytime you want to take a look at our budget, that's where you're going to find it. I think that Mark has done an outstanding job with his pictographics and his graphs, that it makes our budget clear and transparent and it's easy to read and easy to understand. So, we are having more people than ever before taking a look and we're really thankful that you are. So, anything you see and want to give us feedback on, please feel free to do that.
Thank you, Donna. Tyler, I'll call on you next.
Pretty much just echo the comments of the other trustees there and thank the division staff for doing so well in such an interesting time. As far as this budget goes, I think we've done a good job with what has been given to us. And like Clark said, the good news is that the government has at least allowed us to remain status quo during all the craziness here. So, I don't have, I would say that I'm pretty good with where this budget is and where the money's gone and everything. I have some genuine concerns going forward, not so much in the fact of how our budget is done, but just in the fact of how funding is going to be and the decisions that might need to be made in the coming years. So, I do think that the good news is, I think that our budget committee and the staff are well aware of what may be coming down the pipe there and they're doing a good job right now to try and look at the different factors that'll be there and the different things that might happen. So, I'm glad we're kind of on top of that and are looking to the future to see where things may end up. Because it's not funding-wise, things are probably not looking great for the immediate-term future. But I'm good with where things are at here so far. So, thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you, Tyler. Doug?
Thanks, Christine. Again, like everyone else, echo the same compliments to all those people involved with Instructional Budget Committee, Christine Lee and Mark DeBoer. And I want to thank Mark personally because presenting a budget in a fashion that it's understandable and readable and you can digest it. Again, he's, and I want to thank him for his patience for explaining and re-explaining the budget because when you're dealing with over $132 million, and it sounds like a lot, but there's so much, so many areas to cover. The one thing I want to say is about our budget is, when looking at that, I always like to reread what is our budget belief statements. And there's nine of them and they're posted on there. But I think that we as a group have tried to our best to maintain that. And statement two about being open and transparent. Mark has done that by simplifying and making sure that is allowed. I guess the only one recommendation, this came back from feedback online from our learning community. I think maybe giving, if you could write this down or record it, giving our people out there an opportunity to, a little more time to go over the budget. We did extend it, but maybe we need to review that or the trustees for next year. Statement five about, and I'm just going to comment on three, but statement five, what I really like about our budget is promoting equitable access for all students. It doesn't, and what I've always appreciated on our budgets, it doesn't matter what part of the city you come from, it's equitable access to resources, technology, evergreening for all our students. So, there's equal opportunity for learning and I think we have addressed that quite a bit on that and that's what I like. The other thing is, our district over the years, I've been involved with it over 35 years, the one thing I've always appreciated is the maintaining and commitment of our reserves and to deal with emergent situations. And our district has always had the foresight to have those reserves. Sometimes there's also, there's a kind of a negative approach to, well, why do you have reserves? Well, the reserves are for those times when you're not, if you get caught off-guard, you can provide that funding. And the fact that we have allowed a dollar set aside for hotspots so that we can maintain or reduce class sizes come this spring, come this fall, very, very important. And then finally, all the statements, one, three, four, five and eight, all our belief statements based on, are based on, sorry about that, are based on student benefits and that was very important. So, I want to thank everyone who's involved, successful institutions, corporations, small businesses and our district. Everyone has budgets and they don't always answer everyone's needs, but they are in place. And that's why you're going to have promote lasting success. Again, thank you very much and I look forward to any feedback that we have from our community after these presentations.
Thank you, Doug. And I would personally echo all the comments made by my fellow trustees. I think I'm thankful for the province for giving us a more generous funding model than we were anticipating. We can of course always use more, our students can always use more supports in the classrooms. However, this is a budget that we're able to work with. And like Tyler, I do anticipate concerns moving into the future and those are concerns that our board will continue to advocate for. But I know our budget committee and our instructional committees, I applaud you for being active and not reactive with this budget. There was anticipation for holes, there was anticipation for areas of concern. And through wisdom and discernment, you have allocated funding to those areas from within our budget. So, thank you for that because at the end of the day, Doug has spoken to our belief statements and we'll review those in a moment. But those are the statements that form our choices and those are the statements that all of these decisions are moved through. And at the end of the day, we want to provide quality education to our students and supports to our families so that those students can learn and can be successful in their learning and their achievement. So, thank you to all involved. And I would also like to say thank you to the community members, both staff and parents who participated in our feedback loop. Yes, it was, we acknowledge it was a brief time to accept feedback. However, the feedback was appreciated, it will be discussed by board. And as Doug has said, we will talk about how to make that possibly a longer time for the next year. So, thank you again and we will continue to move on with this meeting. So, next, number four is the review of our belief statements. The Lethbridge School Division is primarily funded by Alberta Education. The board is legally obligated to create and approve the annual division budget and to fiscally manage the division's funds in a responsible manner, ensuring that the educational needs of students are met within a balanced budget as required by the Education Act. And here are our beliefs. The board believes the budget should be developed in the best interest of all students. The board believes in a budget process that is open and transparent. The board believes the budget shall provide for staffing to facilitate educational opportunities for all students. The board believes education at the primary level is foundational to student success and as such is a priority. The board believes funds need to be allocated to promote equitable access to educational opportunities and resources for all students. The board believes in keeping division and school levied fees as low as possible. The board believes maintaining an uncommitted reserve is necessary for emergent and contingent situations. The board believes equitable opportunities for student learning are achieved by allocating funds to specific centralized programs and services. The board believes in providing targeted opportunities to further innovative practices in schools. I do believe that the budget we are presenting today fits the mandate of all of the above. So, now we will move on to number five. I will pass this on to Mark DeBoer to lead the meeting. And we will begin with revenues and allocations. Mark?
All right. Thank you, Christine, and thank you to all the trustees on the encouraging words. I just want to thank Christine Lee and the rest of the executive council also for their support and really guiding the direction of this budget. Starting off with revenues and allocations, this can be found on pages 30 to 33 of the executive summary of the budget report and I'll show that right now. I show within these pages are all of the provincial grants that the division receives and all the other revenue sources that is available to the division in this school year. Provincial revenues account for over 93% of the division's total revenues and the details of how we're funded is all found in the provincial funding framework. In Budget 2122, the division is projecting to have 11,634 students, whereas this is a 3.42% increase from the prior year. However, it is still less than the 1920 enrollment levels of 11,753. Using a weighted moving average, which is part of our funding framework, the division has already projected what the estimated weighted moving average cloutback will be that will come into 2223 if we have any reduced enrollments compared to what we're funded. Therefore, based on our estimate of 11,634, we've already deferred the related funding and this can be reevaluated again in the full budget once student enrollment is truly finalized. To support with student enrollments and the transition in the funding framework, the province did provide an estimated $6 million of stability funding through the COVID mitigation grant and the bridge funding grants. And as many of the trustees have indicated, these are one-time grants that may be reduced or eliminated in future budget years. So, long-term planning is really critical. Within the services and support grants, the division has updated the budget to include the two new grants of specialized learning supports for severe coded students in kindergarten and the moderate language delay for pre-K and kindergarten students. A large portion of the funding these new grants was a reallocation from the K-12 specialized learning support grants. Within the school and facility grants, there were grant rate reductions to many of the plant operation and maintenance funding levels. This includes both our per-student funding and our space utilization grants. And one other significant item is that the infrastructure maintenance and real grant had the capital portion removed and reallocated to the capital funds. You'll see that reduction in the IMR grant revenues. As you can see, in the prior year, within our projects and contracts, the division did receive approximately $4.2 million of one-time grant funding. The majority of this relates to the 2021 federal safe return to class grant that we received. This was a one-time grant and will likely not be reinstated the next year. Within our other revenues includes our school fees, our school generated funds, outside grants, investment revenues and one-time reserve funds. As you can see, there was a significant reduction in the budgeted fee revenues as many of the SGF activities such as travel will likely not be available in 2122 due to the COVID-19 travel restrictions. And then, within the use of one-time reserves, it's remaining relatively stable in which the division has already projected some school-based carryforward funding from 2021 into the following year. As you can see, there was also an additional $220,000 in plant operation and maintenance reserves that are being used to support with the grant rate reductions as there are certain costs such as insurance that are actually increasing from the prior year. So, we still have to be able to manage that budget. Just to note that any use of reserves still requires ministerial approval and this will be included in our budget submission. Whereas if the division does not receive ministerial approval, the budget will have to be adjusted accordingly. Within this budget meeting, we're also needing to approve the actual school fee listing, which is also attached to this agenda. Scroll through. As you can see, the foreign student fees, we're not expecting any changes. It should remain at about 11,500, which is the same as the prior year. And the eat fees for early education has already been updated to the $200 per month for 10 months earlier this school year. I've also provided a detailed listing of each of the school's proposed school fee listings and provided an overview of the major changes, which is also attached to this report. Just to clarify, within these listings, there are student fees relating to travel and other related trips. So, to get the actual approval on these fees, should the opportunity be available in the future, this is what they understand, that all travel must be authorized and pre-approved both by the board and other COVID-related travel restrictions. Within each of the actual budgets themselves, the division has updated the school fee listings to include a likelihood component for more accurate budget fee revenues. So, such as any trips would have likely been indicated as highly unlikely, therefore, there's no actual fee revenue being budgeted, even though the fee may be actually approved in case the opportunity presents itself. And as you can see on the following pages, which is also attached to this agenda, we do provide the listing by each school. And this was attached to the agenda that's also available to the public. So, to approve the fee listing, we'll need to have a motion and we provided a recommended motion as follows.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions for Mark regarding revenues and allocation? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve, please?
I move that the board approve the 2021-2022 school fee schedule as presented.
Thank you, Donna. Any discussion? Seeing none, call to question, all in favor? Go pass. Thank you. So carried.
So, as the school fees have, listing has now been approved, we'll also need a motion to approve the revenues and allocations. We've also provided a recommendation that is available.
Thank you, Mark. Can I have someone present the motion, please?
I'll move it. I move that the board approve the revenue and the use of one-time reserves for the 2021-2022 budget as per pages 30 to 33 as presented.
Thank you, Donna. Any questions? Seeing none, call to question, all in favor? So carried. Thank you. Number six, expenditures and transfers. Mark?
A summary of all expenditures and transfers have been outlined on pages 34 and 35 of the budget. However, for the budget actual approval, we'll go through each of these different major programs or sections and then do the approvals accordingly. So, starting with the instructional block, which is found on pages 36 to 38. Overall, certificated salaries and benefits are projected to increase by about 6.3 FTE in teaching staff. This includes an additional two FTE for the new Dr. Robert Plaxton Elementary School that's opening up for 2122. Within the total amount as well, includes approximately 25.6 FT of contingent staffing to support with addressing potential hotspots and to support with schools that have additional student enrollment growth, whereas these positions can be filled once enrollment is finalized and we are coming more into the fall budget update. Within these uncertificated salaries and benefits, which would be our support staff, there's a net increase of 6.2 FT in actual support staff, including a 5.4 FT increase in actual educational assistance. One of the increases or one of the areas of increases obviously relates to the PUF program and the changes in the eligibility. This allowed for additional funding to be allocated, which a large portion of those educational assistance relates to that program unit funding for the kindergarten program. Within the contracted and general services, the largest change is a reduction in the consulting costs for occupational therapists as this was either reallocated last year into a staffing position or it was partially reduced as Alberta Health Services now covering the complex needs within this area. These occupational therapists were previously provided through the RCSD program. Within supplies, the largest change relates to a reduction in the school-generated funds activity costs. This correlates to the reduction in the estimated revenues as if there's a reduction in the amount of trips that are occurring, that is reduction in both the fees and the related costs of those trips. Transfers reduced from the prior year as the prior year does include the commitments or those are the outstanding purchase orders at year-end. And this is always updated just in the fall budget update, whereas in the preliminary update, we do not have that information available yet. So, those are the major changes within the instructional block. So, we do have a motion or a recommendation for a motion available for the instructional block.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions or comments for Mark? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve?
I move that the board approve the instructional block expenditures and transfers as per pages 36 to 38 of the 2021-2022 budget as presented.
Thank you, Donna. Call to question, all in favor? So carried.
So carried.
Just moving on to the Board and System Administration, this is found within pages thirty-nine to forty-one of the budget report. Overall, you can see that the actual allocation that we receive is exactly the same as the prior year, and this is exactly correlating to the amount that we received directly from the province for this specific area. Overall, there was minor changes to the actual wages. That is an actual just update to the related salary and benefit costs. Within contracted services, there was an increase in the insurance costs as the insurance premiums have gone up province-wide or market-wide. So we have increased our insurance for our general liability in this area. Because we are at exactly the same amount of funding, we were able to find savings within supplies and utility costs to support in these increases. So once again, we would need a motion to approve this segment or this area of the budget, and we do have a recommendation available.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark in this area? Being none, can I have a motion to approve, please?
I move that the Board approve the expenditures and transfers from Governance and System Administration as outlined on pages thirty-nine to forty-one of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget as presented.
Thank you, Donna. Call to question, all in favor? So carried.
All right, just moving on to the Operation Maintenance section of the budget, and this is shown on pages forty-two to forty-four of the budget report. As you can see, overall, there is reduction from the prior year. Just as a reminder, there was a total of about two hundred and eighty thousand dollar reduction from the grant rate reductions in the year. However, the division was planning on utilizing about two hundred and twenty thousand of one-time reserves to support in this area as there are cost increases that still need to be managed, such as the cost of our actual school and facility insurance. Within staffing, the most significant update was the actual increase by one FTE of caretaking staff for the new Dr. Robert Plaxton Elementary School. Within the Contracted and General Services, like I mentioned, there's approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars in the insurance costs, and that's with the increased cost of insurance premiums, and this is in relation to our actual schools and facilities. To effectively balance this budget, we did have to draw or reduce some areas in building maintenance and other miscellaneous services. We were able to find some savings on some utility costs as well to support in this area. A part of those utility savings were actually from the division updating and replacing older infrastructure and making some of our facilities more more efficient when it comes to their utilities as well. So once again, we would need a motion to approve this area of the budget, and we do provide a recommendation as well.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments for Mark? Being none, can I have a motion to approve, please? Sorry, Donna, you're speaking and your mic is muted.
Yeah, thought I had muted. I move that the Board approve expenditures and transfers of the Operation Maintenance as outlined on page forty-two to forty-four of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget as presented.
Thank you, Donna. Call to question all in favor? So carried. Transportation, Mark.
Thank you, Christine. Similar, moving on to transportation, which is found on pages forty-five to forty-six of the budget report. As you can see, overall, this has remained relatively same as the provincial grants have actually stayed the exact same as the prior year. The only change is that we did have some additional revenues coming in from the division actually starting providing coordination of transportation services for both Lethbridge School Division and Holy Spirit, in which we, as both divisions, can then maximize our combined services. So with us providing those consulting or those additional coordinating services, we did have an increase in some FTE towards this area, and then we did have some updates to the actual busing costs and contracted services as well.
Mark, if I, sorry, if I could just clarify that increase in FTE was a reallocation from, from, from the administration department, wasn't it, an additional FTE?
Yes.
Reutilizing existing?
Partial FTE, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mark or Christine? Tyler.
Just, excuse me, just a quick question on the busing contract. How long, or I guess, how many years is that contract? And is it level or is there an increasing amount every year? Or how are we tied in on that?
So it's a, it's an initial five-year contract with two renewals of five years each. And technically, the contract we signed doesn't start officially the pricing until, till the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, but we're under that pricing right now as we've transitioned early. And then it goes up, it's approximately two percent a year that it will go up based on the code. And then the other wildcard, of course, there's a fuel price escalator in there. And so what is going to make or break our budget is dependent on fuel pricing movement from year to year.
It's not looking great, but okay.
Any further comments or questions? Being none, can I have a motion to approve, please?
I move that the Board approve the expenditures and transfers for transportation as outlined on the, on page forty-five to forty-six of the two twenty-one, two twenty-two budget as presented.
Thank you, Donna. Call to question, all in favor? So carried. Capital, Mark.
Similar to the other sections, the capital and debt services section is found on pages forty-seven to forty-eight. The only significant change in this area relates specifically to the IMR. Like I mentioned before, the capital portion of the IMR was removed by the province out of our operating funding profile and moved to our capital, our capital fund. So that is the change in this area. The amortization has remained the same as last year, and that is typically updated in the fall budget update once we know more. Just to clarify on the capital portion, it did get removed by about one point eight million dollars. However, the actual that we're actually getting, which isn't shown in this budget as part of the capital fund, was one point six. So there is a slight reduction.
And just to clarify for your information, that capital portion, which is called capital maintenance renewal, CMR, is by application. So we have to apply for it every year, and we submitted a kind of a three-year plan of what we wanted. And we submitted sixteen point five million dollars worth of projects, and we received one point six million, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Being none, can I have a motion to approve, please?
I move that the Board approve the capital and debt services expenditures and transfers as outlined on pages forty-seven to forty-eight of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget as presented.
Thank you, Donna. Call to question, all in favor? So carried.
So the last portion of the budget approval is now to bring it all together in one recommendation and to clarify the requirements if there was a ministerial approval change on our request for reserves. And we have a recommended motion that covers all that accordingly.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions or comments for Mark in this area? Being none, Donna, do you have a motion to approve?
I move that the Board approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget for Lethbridge School Division as detailed in the previous motions and authorize administration to allocate and expend funds in accordance with the budget, and that the Board authorize administration to amend the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two preliminary budget if required by changes in the requested ministerial approval on the use of reserves.
Thank you. Are there any last comments or questions? Being none, call to question, all in favor? So carried. Thank you. The twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget of Lethbridge School Division has been approved. And I just want to say thank you, Mark DeBoer, for all of your incredible work. You alongside Christine Lee and your team, you have, you have shown fiscal prudency in a very challenging time. You have kept teachers in classrooms. You have increased support for students. And we are creating and maintaining spaces for students to learn and students to thrive and, and students to do well. And of course, we're anticipating and hoping for all students to be in classes come September. And I know we want what is best for those students, and I appreciate increased support. I appreciate increasing funding to counseling because I know wellness is going to be a significant piece that we're going to have to be, be giving to our students and supporting them as we re-enter in the year. Clark, I see your hand up. Do you have a question?
Don't know how to put it down.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, didn't mean to call you out on that one. But thank, thank you again for all of your work. I know in a, in a, in a very sensitive and challenging year, you have created a situation where we're going to feel minimum bumps heading into the fall. I know the following fall is, it's a long ways. We'll deal with that when we deal with that. But for this year, thank you for setting us up for success, Mark and Christine. All right, that brings us to the end of our budget meeting, twenty twenty-one. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.